Thank you all very much for being here. Again, we apologize for our delay. Mrs. Bill Arrakis is not here yet, but we're going to go ahead and get started. Again, we appreciate all of you being here today with us. And I want to welcome Dr. Bill Law here to the Seminole campus, to this fabulous digitorium that we're in. It's a great room. And, Dr. Law, we're very, very happy that you're here. And as you know, you have been furnished with some questions that all the candidates have, and we are going to start to go through those questions. And bear in mind that all the candidates will be asked the same questions, but during some of the exchange, we may divert into other areas. But before we start with the questions, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about your whirlwind trip through all of the St. Petersburg College holdings throughout the county and all of the great folks that you've had a chance to meet. And I know this is a homecoming for you, that you were here for a number of years ago. So why don't you just talk a little bit about coming back home?
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me today. It has been a great pleasure to have interviewed over the last two weeks here, it seems like, okay? It's been a long journey. But let me start by, first of all, thanking you for having me here today. I'm very anxious to have the dialogue with the board and to share my background and experience, so thank you very much. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, let me assure you that the courtesy extended to me has been phenomenal on behalf of every member of the faculty and staff and people involved with this search. The days we've spent here could not have been better planned. They could not have been more beneficial. I leave this afternoon, whatever the quality of our discussion together, though, I have had a chance to play all of my cards with the faculty and staff, and they're all face up, and people were very kind. They asked good questions. They followed up, so we've had a really good time. Let me take a second, though, that you did have a chance to meet my wife. Pat is with me, and she is part of it. I would not be here today without her encouragement.[146.81][146.81](APPLAUSE). I have liberal arts degrees. Pat has real degrees. She's an MBA CPA. She's a corporate vice president. She does real work with Haven Hospice out of Gainesville, so she has a tremendous career as well. You know, I'll use that to come back to your opening, sir. We did live here, and we had a great part of our life was here in Pinellas County, as I have reminded everybody. We started our oldest son in school here at Bowder Elementary. We walked him down the street to Bowder. Our youngest son was born in Morton Plant Hospital. So we come here legitimately to this, and renewing the friendships that took place a long time ago are still in place. I've been really gratified by the number of people who have identified themselves and said, "I remember working together with you." And so many of them are in great positions now. They have grown and developed. So again, I say thank you. I'm here because, as I said in my video, I have a great job in Tallahassee, and I'm incredibly proud of the work we've done. And I can remember interviewing with that board some eight years ago to say to them, "I have some skills, and you are looking, and let's see if this isn't a chance to get together." When I saw what you were looking for, I said to myself, gee, I think this is a match. I can provide evidence in each of the areas you identified where I have something to share, some record of accomplishment, some background and experience that I think is of benefit. You have what has proven to be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to select the president at this college, and I don't know if I ever thought about the opportunity to stand here in front of you, but I'm delighted to have that opportunity today. So thank you again for everything. Let me express again my gratitude to all of the faculty and staff here, and I welcome your questions.
Great. Thank you. And before we get into the questions, I want to make sure and recognize Amelia Carey and Dr. Oliver, who is hosting us here today, and the long list of folks who have been putting together these great tours, if you will, over several days. I know that there is a whole lot of work involved in that, and I know Janice Buchanan was Dr. and Mrs. Law's host during their stay here. Thank you, Janice. But thank you all very much. And Amelia, thank you for your leadership on this. This has been great.
You're here.
Okay. Mr. Johnston, I believe you are first up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to put together questions one and 10, because I think they fit. First of all, you've kind of commented already, and I hope I can use Bill rather than Dr. Law. Doesn't seem to be familiar with me, so Bill Law has been somewhat I've known a long time. But you have commented on why you applied, but did you want to comment any more on why you applied to St. Petersburg College?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that opportunity. I'm going to refer to you as trustee, Johnson, okay? I have some protocols that I must observe, okay? But we do go back ways. You know, when the opening occurred, some folks from Pinellas County called me and said, "Hey, did you understand there's an opening there?" And shared the possibility of that opening. And some said, "The purpose is, please keep an open mind. Watch where we go." And I said, "No, you're barking up the wrong tree. I've got eight years' experience in Tallahassee. We're doing great work. I'm not finished there. Thank you very much for the interest." And then some other folks asked me, "Would I just take a look? Would I see what the possibilities are?" And, Mr. Johnson, I made two trips to Pinellas County to talk to community people and others before I decided to apply, because quite frankly, this was not part of my career plan, to take one more step. We thought going to Tallahassee was going to be the last step. But the chance to take one more step on the ladder, to get to the presidency of a bigger, multi-campus college in a booming or a dynamic urban environment in this part of Florida, there was more than I could pass up. So as I looked at the criteria, and then I looked at the possibility, and I did some more exploration, I decided, well, if I don't even apply the day they announce who they've hired, I'll be real disappointed if I didn't even try. So I practiced how to tell my wife that I was going to do this, and I did that a few times, and then she said, "Let's do it. Let's see how it goes." So I come to it in a sense of humility, because if I get this job, I will have to be better at everything I do to do this job, but I look forward to that challenge.
Well, thank you. I want to go into the four-year program, because I have observed the tape and done some reading of some correspondence you responded to, the Committee of 100 and the Miami-Dade College President. And there are some questions that I think we need to reconcile between us, because our board seems to be in a different position than you're in, and one is to do with the governance, because we right now are the sole source of making the opinion to start a bachelor program. And I know that you have discussed putting that under the, I think, a different, put all of them together for... And then there's also a question of funding. We now have a four-year funding, and I think you have made some comments about putting the funding of the two and the four in the same group, so it all comes out of that one pie. And since those are different from where this board is currently, how will we reconcile that difference if you are chosen as our president? Because we've been moving in that direction for so long, we're kind of ingrained that way, and I don't know what your real opinion is on that.
Well, I'm glad we teed that one up first, because it's the most important issue, I think, to discuss.
It is for me anyways.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I want to be clear. Stop me at any time if you think I'm talking around it. But St. Pete, as I said in my video, there they go again. They did it just as they have always done. Run to the open field, declare victory, do a good job, get it started, don't look back. And this institution got off the ground first. You are fortunate enough to have your own legislation, and quite candidly, you're fortunate enough to have your own funding. Nobody else has that. So after this college got its funding and its authority, everything else is up for grabs behind that. We now have 85 approved baccalaureate programs across the state. None have received anything... Chipola, one other program. But none others have received anything near the funding that was able to be put in these programs. So the reality is, you've done it right, and you know what it costs, and you know what it takes to get those programs up and running. So that's the model that we all have to ascribe to. But meanwhile, there are 27 other local boards making the same decision you made with no chance of funding those programs. Yet, we don't know how the funding is going to come down. So my concern has simply been, how do we find the money to fund those? How do we incorporate those into the ethos of a new state college system? And secondly, how do we do that so people aren't stepping in front of me as president of Tallahassee Community College for a local board decision? I salute that. It's going to be hard to get outside me on local control. I grew up that way, and I believe that and have fought very hard for that. In fact, we can come back to that point. But the reality is, when... Let's not talk about this board, because you have your own authority, but some other board makes a decision that that's important to them. Great. I salute that decision. How does that put them in front of me for funding, though? I don't get that part yet. And that's where... Don't split us apart that way. Let's get a strategy that puts us all together to seek funding for this, not just one year, but over the long term. So that's the inside baseball that we've been working on to make that happen. The governance issue, I have been resolute that that needs to stay with the State Board of Education. The final approval goes through State Board. Again, you don't have that... By the way, this college committed to come under a single set of statutes, okay? They committed to do that. I don't know when that's going to happen, but that was a commitment that was made when the State College Task Force was being put together. So I haven't followed up on that. It's not my issue. But the reality is, we don't have a state policy that people salute and approve, and not one new dollar has been identified even next year for additional baccalaureate education. So I think where we find ourselves is, St. Pete is solid. They know how to do it. They're leading the way. But if the other guys start doing this on the cheap, we won't benefit from that. None of us. And I happen to think, by the way, that this institution will suffer the most if that's where we land. That is, we do community college baccalaurates on the cheap here, okay? Because they'll just let your funding erode down to that level. So I think all of us need to be fluid in that discussion. I'm for baccalaureate education through the community colleges. I'm for more of it. I salute it as a local decision, but I think we all owe it to ourselves to get this into a more formal and recognizable public policy, and that's where I have put my effort. I think, Mr. Chairman, you received a letter from the Commissioner of Education supporting that position. He... Mr. Johnson, if I could take two more minutes. When they put together the state task force on community college baccalaurates, the Commissioner invited me onto that committee. I think I get there from my legislative background and probably because this is not the highest priority at Tallahassee Community College, so I don't really have a dog in the hunt right now. And then, secondly, he asked me to chair the funding task force, and I'd like to think that, again, we have some common background here. I think my reputation for understanding state-level funding and its nuances is something I'm pretty proud of. And we made recommendations to strengthen the approval process and to strengthen the startup process and to strengthen the funding process. Some of those have been adopted. Some are yet to be adopted. So we're working our way through it, but I need to say, as I've had a chance to talk and learn from the staff here today, I'm convinced we're closer together, no matter where we started, we're closer together today than we've ever been. We need to be careful that we don't let things get away from us. This institution could be the biggest loser in that if state policy doesn't firm up pretty quickly behind. How are we going to do this? Let me stop there, because I'm sure there are more nuances to that, but please let me...
Well, I just wanted to follow up.
Okay.
We're in a position that's unique, and we want to keep that, if at all possible. And we're... The new president, I would think, has got to support that, and that would be counter, really, to where you've been talking and the statements you've made. And somehow, we need to reconcile that between what our board feels we want to do and what you've been saying. What you've said, I think, really makes sense statewide, because somehow or other, you have to come together to get the funding. But yet, that's counter to where we are today, and we're going to be a little protective, I think, in trying to maintain the position that we're in. We fought for it the last couple legislatures after we've got it, and we've been able to maintain it, and we'd like to go have our president support us on maintaining it rather than diluting it, as I would see it, by taking away the local control this board has right now and also the funding.
Let me try again, because I really think we're close, and I'm not making my point very well then, if you think we're still at odds, okay? Let's look forward. When you approve... When we approve the next baccalaureate program or set of programs here, how would we expect those to get funded? Are we going to try to get our own funding for that with a unique individual appropriation, or should we expect that to be part of a statewide commitment to expanding baccalaureate education at these institutions? I don't think our chances in this environment, quite frankly, are very good to try to get our own unique funding for the next level of programs here. That we could disagree on. There's no way to go look up the right answer, but I don't think, in the environment I hear in Tallahassee, there isn't anybody saying, "Let's put earmarks in the bill." For us, just the opposite is the case. So that's point number one. Point number two, I think we ought to go back and get the facts. I simply... In fact, the commitment of St. Pete College to be part of a single set of statutes was made by the presidents on the pilot college task force. Remember, we ran parallel task forces, dueling task forces. We didn't take that up on ours. That commitment was made by the presidents of the pilot colleges, of which St. Pete was one. So I don't have any particular background on that, Mr. Johnston. I'll make one more point. I'm concerned about the loss of local control because there is no state policy. The first time two institutions get into a public spat over who should have a program, we will be in a real mess. And the next thing that will happen will be, and you see me smile because we've been to this, let's put in a board above the local boards. Let's put in a new board between the State Board of Education and the local boards, and that's a zero-sum game. At that point, you have to say, "Now what responsibilities do we give to that board?" And I think that's a lose-lose proposition, and I think some people have been a little cavalier towards saying, "We want to just..." That will never happen. I'm telling you, it's going to happen in the foreseeable future, okay? So I have a concern about protecting local control by not being self-regulatory in that sense. So I think, quite frankly, it's all new. As I say, it's evolving. I think you would expect me to use my talent to support the direction that this board has carved out. There's no difference there. Let me make one other point, because it may help you see my position a little bit better. This is... In Tallahassee, in the district I represent right now, we have 60,000 students at two universities in baccalaureate programs. Baccalaureate education is not the issue of choice for us in Tallahassee. As I have told everybody, our saddest day is the day after graduation, when all those people with baccalaureate degrees pack their car and leave our town. And I have been asked to use my talent to grow the jobs, to keep those people in town. So that's where we have put our priority in response to our Board of Trustees, grow the economic base for all of us. And then if you'll give me one more minute, because it's terribly important to me. Another reason that I have been reticent is, in our community, Florida A&amp;M University, and again, we have common background in these dialogues, would feel very threatened by Tallahassee Community College starting baccalaureate programs. If the day comes when we do that, we have to do that carefully and in partnership and in friendship with one of America's historic black institutions. But if I were to go to the microphone at the downtown Rotary and announce that we're headed in baccalaureate degrees, we could create a rift in our community that might never heal, and I won't lend myself to that. We've been to that dance, and I think our friends and family come to that concern legitimately. They can point to evidence in the past that threatened their very existence, and I simply won't be part of that. And if we go there, we have to go there carefully. So I have been particularly quiet to not... And I guess as I was practicing this, I guess I better make all the points. This institution should understand that challenge more than any other. It took a long time for the Gibbs issue to heal, and this institution ought to have a particular sense of... Sometimes a good thing cannot produce good value for everybody. Congratulations. It appears to have healed, and now we celebrate the heritage of Gibbs as part of a common heritage. But I can go back 22 years when I was here, and it wasn't quite that robust. It had a little more edge on it. So I've been very careful. I've lent my best efforts to a state policy that supports just what you want to do. If at times it was confusing in how we get there, sometimes state policy is like that, Mr. Johnson. But I don't think you ought to have any doubts about, if you put me in the game with a game plan, you can expect it to get executed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've said what I'd like to hear.
Dr. Law, thank you for that last answer. I think it speaks to your passion about community colleges, but it also speaks to you knowing the community that you live in, and I appreciate you representing Tallahassee Community College so well, but also recognizing that FAMU is one of those historically black colleges in the United States that has a great reputation, and it needs to be recognized as well. So thank you.
I appreciate that.
My question is the second question. If you become president of the college, what will you concentrate on in the first 30 days?
This one, I've practiced this answer. Everything but written out. You've done the background on me. You know my reputation is action. I have a bias toward action and getting things done, so I can't wait to get started. But I have absolutely promised myself that I will put together what we'll all recognize, because you'll help me put it together, a learning plan. I need to get... There's a lot for me to learn. I can't answer detailed questions about the next steps in baccalaureate education. I can't answer all of the questions about inter-campus relationships and about the organization. I certainly can bring some background experience, but learning the community is going to take some intense effort on my part. Love to do it. Love to do it. So I think the first 30 days, or in fact, 45 days, ought to be devoted to a learning plan that all of you have signed off on, that I execute and that I share with you. And then after that time, you would expect me to outline the areas that I think are where the next steps ought to happen, and then you would say, "All right, let's draft this into either a revision to our strategic plan or a new strategic plan, and then let's march together altogether." So I... You know, I'd love to have, "Here's what we'll do on day one, and here's what we'll do on day two." That's my better angel, but, you know, as I said, if I get this job, I'm going to have to grow a little bit, and I have to be a little more disciplined than that if I'm going to do a good job for you. So the first 30 or 45 days would be a very defined and shared learning plan. You'll know who I'm talking with. You'll know what I'm hearing. You'll know what I need. You'll have a chance to comment. You'll have a chance to contribute, and then together, we'll decide, "Here's what that means. Let's do this, and then let's take these actions." That would be my approach.
My next question would be, leaders often talk about their skill sets. What are your most prominent skills in your set?
I can represent myself well, and I hope that is something that translates that I can represent this institution well. I enjoy doing just what we're doing right now. This is selling our services to our community is my passion, so that's one. Secondly, I'm a pretty good team builder. People who work with us, who work for me, can all talk about how they have grown and developed working as part of a team, so I'm pretty good at that. At our institution, one of the things that I worked hardest on was to have people understand planning matters. So we have a very dynamic strategic plan owned by the Board of Trustees. People know where we're going, and they know what steps we're taking, and they know what monies have been allocated to the effective implementation of the strategic plan. So I'm a planner by trade. And then the last piece, I think that's important for this discussion, is my latest growth is, it's all transparent. Everybody sees the same numbers. Everybody shares the same information. We use the most up-to-date technologies to keep everybody in the dialogue, so the same budget numbers that I show you will be the same budget numbers that I meet with the classified staff, that I meet with the Faculty Senate, the Faculty Governance Organization, that we meet with everybody. There's only one set of numbers, and everybody has them, and then we would process them at this level, too. We do that every day. If we had the time or interest, we could literally fire up TCC's Board of Trustees website, go back to see what we have presented in workshop forums, all of the manner. We could walk you through our budget planning for next year, our tuition planning. We could walk through our strategic plan. We could walk through the requests that are currently made for budget priorities for next year. It's all available all the time to everyone, and then together, we craft that final plan. So I'm pretty good at making those conditions work, Mr. Trustees. So I'm a pretty affable guy, and I think I have a real passion for this, and I have the energy to do it, too. So I'm sort of growing... My enthusiasm for this is picking up.
Thank you. I'm glad.
Having gotten past that first question, I'm a little more enthusiastic.
Dr. Law, I get to ask the next question. What do you expect in a board-president relationship? And I have some follow-up questions to this specifically.
Why don't you ask those, and I'll... No, that's okay. Well, you know, I'm going to repeat stuff I learned from your great consultant, Jeff Hockaday. In fact, at an FACC workshop six, eight years ago, Jeff was running a trustee-president workshop. And of course, I'd already been a president for 15 years, so I didn't need to go. I just needed confirmation on what I was doing, and it was an eye-opener for me. The Board of Trustees has to do three things. Just what you're doing now. You have to hire... I used to say, "Hire and fire the president." You have to evaluate the president. You have to hire and evaluate the president. You have to own the strategic plan. You don't have to do all the work, but you have to know what the strategic plan is. You have to know what's going to happen, and you have to bless that. And then you trust us, the paid hands, to go do that. And then you have to own the annual budget each year. You have to know what's in that budget. You don't have to know lineups. You don't have to know in-district travel. You have to know what the budget priorities are and why we're spending money here rather than there, and how it executes the strategic plan. Those are really the three things that the board should be devoting its best energies to. There's a lot of ministerial things, and there are a lot of... We have to do the PICO and all of those. Those are valuable. But those other things are irreducible. If you give those up, you're not doing your job as a board, and I'm not doing my job as president if I do them for you. So that would be what I would do. Secondly, would be to have you focus on the most important, the strategic things. We can't do everything at once, but if I don't honor your services as a board by giving you board-level responsibilities to deal with and the tools to have a valuable discussion, then you will get into areas that are inappropriate for board members, okay? And next thing you know, we'll be trading phone calls, saying, "Let's clarify," okay? And you won't do it nastily. You'll do it because we've left a vacuum. And what we ought to do is say, "What's the value of your time? What's the level of service represented by a gubernatorial trustee, gubernatorial appointment confirmed by the Senate?" That's something to be proud of. How do we honor your time and your service? How do we get the best from you in that representation? And make sure that we don't let that gravitate down to things that don't really matter. So that's what I would expect. Everything is open and above board. I mean, I just need to tell you, I... Once you make the leap to say, "It's all going to be information that everybody can get," it isn't always pretty, but, boy, life gets really simple really fast, okay? And you want to know what we're working on and why we're working on it. So when we share information with you, it's the same information that everybody has. And then you ask your questions at your level, and they're going to be often the same, sometimes different, so...
One of my follow-up questions you just answered about sharing of information. And you've served as a president in Illinois, where they have elected trustees.
Yes.
And Texas with elected trustees, and of course, here in Florida and Tallahassee with appointed trustees. And I realize that you have different relationships as far as with board members. Evelyn, you just may enjoy working with and just love her personally. There may be a board member like me who you may not like personally all that much. I don't think that would be the case. I hope not.
No, I would like Evelyn no matter what, okay? I'm sure, okay?
But I guess that's the balancing act of a president. How do you maintain a professional relationship with each board member, depending on, you know, excluding your personal biases for or against that board member, to ensure that communications are equal with each board member and that same amount of integrity is maintained in the relationship with each board member?
I will tell you, I have worked with lots of different boards, and some are high need, and, you know, like everything else. Some are high maintenance, and some need more information. Some I have to chase... and some need more information, some I have to chase down between Board meetings. They just happen to be on the Board and they give good service. I treat every Board member the same. I return everybody's phone calls as soon as I can. I answer everybody's questions the same way. Nobody gets information that is only their information to have. I do not get involved in the selection of the Board chairs or any of that. That is, I honor your decision-making at your level, okay? If I get there, then I need to be a Board member, not a college president. And I have learned, there's not much difference between elected and appointed. People who come to it legitimately have the interest in the community and the focus. There's a different sense of community when you collect local property taxes, as some of you may understand, but it doesn't change what we do. So I will tell you, I have served with scores of Board members, and I don't think there's a single one who could ever point to an incident where they felt that they were getting less attention or the back of my hand or any sort of second. I can't think of one. I can't even think of a good example that way. There are some who call me all the time, and as I say, there are some who go the other way. And then I want to say another thing, this is really self-serving, but you know, I had the pleasure, I learned what Boards look like in front of this Board, you know, with Phil Benjamin and Dick and others. So I know what a good Board can do. I would never, never do anything except support that. So you know, what we have is really good, and I'll do everything I can to support that.
And another follow-up you just answered, so you've been one step ahead of me on both my follow-ups, and is what's your involvement in the Board politics of selected Chair and Vice Chair? And you already answered that, it is none.
Won't do it. There's sort of a cute by-story on this, Trustee Burke. This is the craziest thing in the world, the Governor's Office calls the Presidents when they get set to reappoint people, okay? So those of you who have earned the Governor's trust previously, the Governor's lower-level staff people call and say, Mr. President, would you like to comment on Trustees Burke? And I keep thinking, why are they calling me? That's not an appropriate role for the President. I don't get it. I don't understand why the President would get input on who the Governor wants to appoint. You are trustees. You have been entrusted with the future of the institution. I think we ought to celebrate that and we ought to honor that. Nobody appointed me in that role. So I value what you do and value it. Last thing, in our, I don't allow anybody to talk down about the Trustees in my presence, and quite frankly, there are times when I've asked the Board not to, that their language has not been appropriate referring to faculty and staff. So I've done that one fair-handed both ways.
Mr. Burke, Dr. Law mentioned a letter sent to the Board. I don't remember receiving that. Has that been distributed?
I got that this week.
Okay.
I'm happy to have it with me now. I was going to give it to Amelia.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anything else?
Thanks.
I had occasion, speaking of Boards, I spoke with Karen Moore a few weeks ago. I called her, and she is the Board Chair at TCC for the benefit of our audience. She doesn't like us right now very much.
She'll get over it.
We had a great talk and a great conversation, and no surprise, she speaks very, very highly of you. So. St. Pete's College, as you know, has several campuses. You probably have visited most of them, if not all of them. How would you go about making people on all the campuses feel valued and equal?
I think the good news, Mr. Chairman, from my visit is that that is going to be a lot easier than I thought. Let me say how encouraged I was after visiting all the sites and seeing the sense of self that each site has. They all have their own identity, and they like their identity. When you go downtown, they're very excited about the opportunities in front of them and the success that they've had. We spent the morning in Tarpon Springs. Not a surprise, they celebrate the identity that they've created and they talk about what we can do next. They have a sense of self. And the same thing happened at Health Education and candidly at St. Pete's, Gibbs and Clearwater. So the good news is, each of the campuses really, really want to move forward. They don't really see themselves competing, and I think that the leadership issue would be to say, how do we unfold that? How do we tap into that sense of pride and presence that people have and move forward that way? So I think the value would come from people saying, we can do more in our own environment, and we're not really in competition each with the other. The second is the President, just, it's a parallel question to Mr. Burke's question. You have to treat everyone equally. I have to make an effort to be sure that I know what's happening on each of the campuses, that my presence is seen on each of the sites, that people have access to me in a convenient way. A lot of that is really personal. And then the last part would be, that would be the fun in a strategic plan, is to pull together the strategic vision of each of the sites as part of a cohesive plan, so that you as the Board know what we're doing in five, six, eight locations, online, all those sorts of things. But I was quite taken with the differentiation in the sense of, make things, get out of the way a little bit, let us blossom. So I think that's going to be a little easier than I anticipated for us. I was really glad because I was really worried. That can be missionary work if you're not careful, and that's not just leadership, so.
And as a segue to that, how do you build your relationship with faculty?
I've done that one by valuing what they do and speaking that value, okay? And that comes kind of easily to me. Secondly, I think that I've built that, I learned a long time ago, faculty will respect you if you tell them to their face what they already know when they ask. When they ask a question, they sense what the answer is. And if you tell them true and precisely, here's where we are, here's where we're going, here's what happens, more often than not, they will be on your side. Very rarely will they be insulted by that. But if you try to tell them something that they know is not true, you will lose all the respect that they have for you. So I try to be as candid as I can and still maintain my affability with them. It's not personal, here's where we are. And faculty, I think they value that. And then thirdly is to celebrate their successes. And there is a great deal to celebrate. If we want to honor the service of our faculty to students, we have to recognize that. And that comes in the form of salary, and it comes in the form of recognition, and it comes of national recognitions that I can nominate people for, and it comes in terms of release time to do other things that are of interest to them and are important to our students. So I think what you do is have a philosophy that says, take faculty as an entity, but treat each one individually. What works for each of those and how do you move that forward? So you know, a lot of it is just relationships. At our institution, I meet on a regular basis every month with the Faculty Senate President and the President Designate. They are a standing item on my calendar, and it is their job, it is their meeting. They can bring whatever issue they want. They, by the way, meet every week with my senior academic vice president. So most of the dialogue between the faculty is handled at the vice presidential level. And that's appropriate, that's really what it needs to be. At my level, it's often, what are the big issues? What are the confirmations we need? How do we move forward? So that's first and foremost. Secondly, at their invitation, I meet with them as their executive committee, their expanded executive committee, or with the Faculty Senate as a whole, on their invitation. And that happens once each semester in some form or another. The rules are the same. You ask it, I'll answer it. We pull up as much information as we can, we share what we want to do, and that works. Thirdly, each year, when the Faculty Senate President takes over, I sit down with that individual and say, what do you want to accomplish this year? When you have finished your year of service, you need to be able to point back to something that got accomplished, because you're going to spend a lot of time and get pulled in a lot of different directions, and you're going to stamp out a lot of small ground fires. And let's be sure at the end of the year that you have a significant accomplishment to point to as a result of your commitment to leadership. And what happens, Mr. Chairman, is now eight years of that, you start seeing a record of accomplishment. And the value of the Faculty Senate has gone up in that regard. They know that they can work together with the President to accomplish things of importance to them. Then the individuals have felt valued, and they stay with you in the next round. So you know, a lot of it is, you know, probably good experience comes from bad experience, but we've had a lot of good experience recently.
Great, thank you. Ms. Villarquez?
Okay. What role have you played in fundraising for your colleges?
Well, thank you very much, Wapu. Good to see you. You know, the President, that's after, that's one of the significant parts of my responsibility. So we have had, I think, a very good record of success since I have arrived. When I got there, the foundation had been started by my predecessor, Dr. Weatherall, but it was still a pretty fledgling organization. They had plans to move it ahead, and I was happy to pick up those plans. So we have a foundation and it's doing fine. The first order of business, though, was a $10 million capital campaign. You know, that's either a lot or a little, depending upon who the list of donors can be, and in Tallahassee, that's a lot. We were very successful. We got that done. And along the way, we got a named donation for our latest crown jewel, the Health Education Center. So one of the prominent Tallahassee families gave us a donation that allowed us to put their name on the building. So that's, that campaign has been successful. Secondly, we have raised a great deal of money in other funds through grants and competitive grants, so much so that at one point, I told the grant writer, throttle back a little bit because we have to absorb what we're doing. But I had them produce a list, and it's 18 or 20 million dollars over the last three years. Some of those, and those I think are all the competitive ones. We're not lucky enough to have the ranking member of the Appropriations Committee as our rep, but we do have a Democrat on the Appropriations Committee, and Representative Boyd has helped us do some very important things in Homeland Security and in others. But we have raised a great deal of money in support of student success. I think if you've done some background on us, you know that that's really where we're making our name now, is the support of students beyond the classroom. And we have had more than several millions of dollars in that. And then lastly, let me say, and then we'll take it wherever you want, our district includes Gadsden County, the poorest county in Florida. Nobody would trade their problems for Gadsden's problems. It is very, very difficult. And we, I'm proud I made it in my own heart and then mobilized the commitment, we made a special commitment to Gadsden County that, I said, if the day I leave, if Gadsden is still the same as the day I got there, I would have failed as a President. Okay? So now I know what I can't do, now I have to figure out what to do. And we have gone ahead and in the last five or six years, put together the plan. But to give you an idea, I now have a half million dollars in after-school programs for elementary and middle school kids. We're good at writing grants. You know, we have to do that in partnership. If we want those kids to land at TCC, we've got to keep them in school. I have several millions of dollars in middle school and high school grants. We just, it's a compelling case. We now have, you know, we've had a series of successes, so each new grant now adds to what we're doing, and that has been an enormous. If you ask me what I'm proudest of, it will be our commitment to Gadsden County. There is still a great deal of work to be done. We will, whatever day I leave, there will be a great deal of work yet to be done. But we have changed the flavor of Gadsden County. There are kids now who understand they can go to college, and a lot of kids that way. It has, it's so much fun. But whoever thought I would be in the elementary school after-school programs, but that's what our community needed, and we raised, that one was a 21st Century Grant. I have a half million dollars a year in after-school programs for elementary. So we've been very creative on how to go. We don't have a lot of deep pockets, I will tell you. I had all I could do. Dr. Buchanan was with us. I felt like raising a little money for TCC last night. We were, I met more people who have a generous soul in one evening than I've met in a long time in Tallahassee, okay? So you have done a spectacular job here. I would look forward to doing that work here. I know how to do that.
Okay, good.
Thanks for sharing that story about Gadsden County. That is interesting, and it does show a good side of you, Dr. Law. That's very impressive. It is also an unusual county, because from what I understand, there's Coca-Cola wealth in Quincy. That is, it's just interesting, the dynamics, you have very rich and you have very, very poor in Gadsden. A lot more very, very poor, though.
We're bridging that gap. I'm happy to say, the community is starting to find common cause through us to come back together, so that's been a real nice part of it.
That's a very commendable story.
I like it, thank you.
My question has to do with facilities, and we're very blessed with Susan Ryder here at St. Petersburg College. She has done a magnificent job and is doing a magnificent job for us. Dr. Cutler's been excellent in getting us PICO funds, making priorities of these items. And facilities, especially now here in the Tampa Bay area, when we're competing against the for-profits, and they're in high-end office, Class A office building, it's important that we maintain our facilities and have competitive facilities. And we have needs. As beautiful as this digitorium is, at this campus, we're limited to growth because we don't have the proper science labs here, and it's limiting our growth here on this campus, and we need those. At Clearwater Campus, our library there is way back. It looks the same as it did when you left here, and it looks the same as when it was built in the 60s. So we do have very strong needs in facilities, so we can continue to compete. And also, just because it's the right thing to do in offering our students the best facilities possible. What is your commitment to facilities and maintaining and acquiring for us the best facilities we can have here at St. Petersburg College?
First of all, I want to say, one of the happy experiences of the last couple of days is, just as you've pointed out, you have done a spectacular job in the facilities area. I was particularly taken, when we were at Tarpon, Dr. Carney up there says, and Dr. Law was here and remembers Agora and several things, he doesn't remember, and he was talking about things that weren't there. I couldn't remember them because they didn't exist when I was there, so you have grown at that one. I was commenting to Susan that the St. Pete's Gibbs campus, I was concerned about what I was going to find. I have seen too many places, often old high schools, where it looked like they just spent a lot of money, but it still looks like an old facility, and that's not the case down there. They have done a great, the learning space is very nice, and certainly the art space and other things. So congratulations for all that. PICO is a very difficult discussion. I mean, we all remember the good days, okay? And that part, you know, I know how to play that game. In fact, I'd be really happy to be representing a county with more legislative clout than I currently represent, because the PICO game is an inside game, it always will be and everything else. It's getting a little more regularized. It's not going to happen for the next year or two. They've finished in a couple of projects. We have the last piece of our Health Education Center on this year, and every night I say my prayers that it stays in there till the end, and then we're done with that. What we have to do, though, I think, is to start thinking of alternative ways. How can we do this? In my economic development work, we've had some success, but here's the deal. In Tallahassee, we always think that every building has to get built with PICO funds. I don't know why we would think that with TK Weatherall having been the President of TCC and then at FSU, okay? I don't know how that idea started, but we believe that. And the reality is, we can't do that. So we have to be more creative in bringing some private sector investment into what we're doing. So for instance, I just made a deal for a new advanced manufacturing training center, where we took a decrepit building that we owned, that had no effective going-forward life, made a deal with a local businessman and entrepreneur to lease it to him for 40 years, so that he could get a bank loan. He would retrofit it to spec for us, so we could build a state-of-the-art manufacturing center. We would lease it back from him for 20 years, add, I might add, half of the going rate in Tallahassee for that kind of space. And at the end of 20 years, he would hand it to us, and both parties would be done. I have a new advanced manufacturing training center. I can find the operating money from grants for the next five years. I have the operating costs covered for five years. The thing will open this summer, and I didn't have to get PICO money or anything else to do it. And we think it's a model not just for the college, but for the county in our economic development. We brought private sector dollars into the public sector dialogue. They get the benefit of the depreciation and also the gift benefit at the end of the term, and that's enough to make it a viable, profitable deal for them over the period of time. And I think there are more rabbits down that trail when we learn how to do that, okay? Now, I don't know if I can build an 85,000-square-foot health center that way, but I suspect that we are on to something with this. And that's the kind of creativity I And that's the kind of creativity I would like to, that, that's the only answer, okay? If, if we wait for PICO dollars, it's going to be a very long wait. You know, that's probably why TK got out of the business, because there's no more PICO money, okay?
I know, I know the answer to this, but what experience have you had in working with the local and state representatives? I know the answer.
Thank you. The answer is a lot.
I know you have a lot.
A lot, yes, ma'am. That, that has always been something that, that I've enjoyed doing. I, I have a lot, three county commissions. I think I can have every commissioner call me back on my cell phone. I know I've got their numbers. I, I know, I'm very proud that, because I'm in Tallahassee perhaps, but probably because I worked for the legislature and have some background and experience, I still get invited to participate at, at a very high level of dialogue. The Senate Appropriations Committee invited two or three of us to sit at the table with them, and to talk about what, what are strategies for funding? How do we get through this time? And, and there's a little bit of ego involved when they invite you to sit at the table and share ideas with them. But I suspect that they're saying, you, you understand how this system works. Tell us something that are of value. So, I thoroughly enjoy doing that. Big delegation here, takes a lot more energy and a lot more focus, but same, same as we talked about with students, in faculty and board members. Treat everybody the same, and make sure they know your name and do that. That part has gone very well. I think you could talk to any of the, the elected officials I know, and I think they would say, Bill's a reliable partner in, in our efforts.
Did you want to touch any more?
I'm ten.
I have another question.
I have one, too.
Go ahead, David.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Bill, when we were discussing before your program, you talked about St. Pete College being way out in front in the open field and leading the pack. How do you see yourself continuing that format that we seem to have had here at St. Pete? Because St. Pete, to me, and, and my experience with it, has always been a leader of the 28 community colleges. May not, may not be loved by all 28, but we were certainly more creative sometimes. And you've talked about some of your creative things, and I lodge you for that, you know, you put together on your manufacturing. That sounds like something that St. Pete should be doing. So, but how do you see yourself in that position as far as continuing the philosophy we've had, being out front and creating things?
I think if you, if you boil that down a little bit, it means keeping in touch with the community. That, so that when you move, people say, aha, that's the right move. And I, I think you get that by being active and interested in the community, keep, keep your contacts open throughout the community. I don't suppose that the president woke up one day and said, you know what? I think this community needs baccalaureate degrees from us, so let me, I, I suspect that came from a lot of nurture and a lot of phone calls, a lot of dialogue. And that's the way to do this, is to keep, keep in touch, make sure we know what's happening and how it goes. I want to say, though, I think there's, there's another part, and if it doesn't come up, I, I want to share some other insight that I have. In my explorations before I came down, I, I talked to folks, and everybody talks about just that. This college always has something new and exciting and moving forward. I want to be sure that we take time to double-check that we haven't left anything behind, okay? The relationships with the school districts are still vastly important, and we need to be sure that in, in some of the excitement for new things, the old things still work as well as we always wanted them to work. And I would spend some time doing that to Mr. Johnson, because I, the school district, we're really lucky. It's a, lucky, there's only one school district to deal with. You know, when you have three children and three school districts, you, you, it's like raising three kids. You've got to be fair in different ways to everybody, okay? And they have to know it. But I've met with the school superintendent to ask her what we can do, and she is highly complimentary of the relationship, so I, I bring it up for just that reason. But there's a lot more for us to do. There's a lot of changes going on in the way kids finish high school and move to college, and for a lot of kids, it's not working that way. And, and we need to be just as artful in saying, how can we get our arms around these kids and have them see St. Pete College in their future as that changes? So, I'd like to be thoroughly creative. I don't, that's usually not a criticism I get, so I think I can meet your needs on that, but at the same time, I want to be sure that, that the blocking and tackling is still working the way we want in the game plan. And I, I think that's a good measure. You know, we ought to just keep having that dialogue and keep calibrating ourselves. But I'm, I'm pretty entrepreneurial and creative as well, so I, I think I can keep you happy on that score.
Good, thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Dr. Law, thank you so much for answering the questions the way you have. I've, I've been really impressed, because some of the questions, you could have easily just skated around, but you took your time and answered some of them that I didn't think you really needed to answer. It was very obvious, and some of the stuff that you've done by your background and the things that we've read. But you mentioned earlier, maybe more than once, that ultimately, you are the salesperson for the college. And what I'd like you to do is take a few seconds, think about your answer, and give us a one-minute commercial or less on selling St. Petersburg College to anybody that you think you need to be selling it to, and give us your commercial on, on, on how you would sell the college. It could be to this board, it could be to that group out there, or, you know, the legislature, whoever.
Let's take a try. I think the most important sale would be to, to a family or, or a student. So, let's do, advertising is not one-size-fits-all. Same message, different packaging, right? So, we're going to, we're going to do this, we're going to do a couple of different commercials, okay? Take one. You know, if I were, if I were talking to a concerned parent with, with a student there, I'd say, you know, you are going to make a terribly important decision in, in the next couple of months or next couple of weeks. You have one of the great opportunities, however, to both move yourself forward and to keep all of your options for additional growth open. In your community, you have a college that has served this community for 80 or more years, where if you take this step, you have a full array of programs and opportunities and services and support to help you take the next step after you leave here. You will get a classroom experience that is the equal of any you can pick, and you will pay for that at a rate lower than you can find anywhere else. I think your best bet is to come to St. Pete Junior College. Call 1-800-SBJC. Okay, that's what we want. Secondly, though, I think it would be important to talk, if I was talking to, I hope I could get work with the Economic Development Council and, and the economic infrastructure here. And if I had a corporate executive across from me, I would say to, to him or her, I would say, you know, the, you're going to get incentives, they're going to talk incentives to move you here, they're going to figure out how to run water and power to your back door, they're going to pave the driveway for you, they're going to do all those sorts of things. The moment will come, however, when you will need to figure out how you're going to make a profit. And the, the way you're going to make a profit is to have us join with you, to provide you an educated, trained, and continuously trained workforce. We know how to do it, we've done it before, we can give you the names of people to talk to, and you ought to make that choice. But that's what you need to be focused on. The incentives are just to come on. That'd be two. The, the third part would be...
Take three.
Who's that?
Take three.
Take three. If I were talking to a donor, which I hope to do, somebody who, who knows, they're discerning donors, I would tell them, you're going to get hit for a lot of different things. People are going to ask you, in your generosity, to make a lot of different donations. You cannot make a donation that will impact more lives faster than donating to St. Pete College. If you want to see the benefit of your donation, give us the money. Tell us what you would like to, done with that money, and then watch us do it with your money. But you will change the lives of people in this community with your donation. You won't just get a thank-you note from us, and then it goes into a billion-dollar endowment. It will change lives in front of your eyes. We will let you shake hands of those students whose life it changes, and that's what I would do. I better quit here, because I don't know what take four is, okay?
Mr. Chair, one more, I have one small question. Dr. Law, our number-one customer at the college are the students. And on, two days ago, we had a presentation on student services, and I have had the privilege of going on the first day of the semester and watching how our student services try to meet the needs of the demands of all these students. And believe me, it's tough. What in your assessment, and coming from Tallahassee and other places, how do we, or how would you, as a, as a, as the new president of St. Petersburg College, try to make students or streamline processes? What processes would you try to streamline or look at to make sure that the students feel like all the needs that they have are, are getting met?
That's been our dialogue, and quite frankly, that's where we have made the most impact. That's the, the part, people pay us to come talk to them on that issue.
I had heard that, but I want to be sure that I got it right.
All right, so I'm, I'm bragging, because now's the good time to brag. If I go home without bragging, I'll feel bad on the ride home. There's too many of them and too few of us, so we have to figure out how to bridge that gap, okay? What we have decided was that, and we did this by evaluating what's not working, and I, and I'm proud to say, I think your, your folks went through that exercise recently, and it's, it's an eye-opener. I mean, good schools like ours still need to do that. Here's, here's what we did, and here's what we, we're working on, and I'm very proud of this. Every student at St. Pete, excuse me, every student at Tallahassee Community College now has a Student Portal Individualized Learning Plan. Everything we know about that student comes up within a very easy-to-navigate portal where every piece of information is there. So, the student knows where all the information is, the advisors know where all the information is, and we communicate through that. We know which students are financial aid, we know which students are on probation, we know this, our messaging can be targeted to them. Secondly, there's a great deal of information and intelligence built into that system. So, we have students, it's called my goal, my assessment, my goal, my plan, my execution, so that the student says, here's what I think I want to do, and we walk them through. They're doing it online. Some students will need help. It's not all technology, but so many students will run with that, and they don't need all the information today. They just need enough to, to go. Long and short is, they make their plan, they identify where they're headed. We pull down the curriculum from our, our transfer partners, from our university partners, so that a student has in front of them not just what they take with us, but how does it fit when they go across the street to Florida State, or FAMU, or USF, or Florida? All of that is in front of them. Every counselor interaction is recorded there, so when they meet with a counselor or advisor, the notes are there, so there's a history of how that works. So, that, what it allows us to do is give students a little bit of help, and then many can execute their own plan. Some will come back to us to say, I need more help. And then the last piece is, we can watch to see people who are not fulfilling that plan. They tell us one thing, and their behaviors look differently, okay? Equally important, we have built in the intelligence so that there's some early warnings. Let me help you. I'm, I'm pretty good at numbers. It would be hard for me to tell you exactly how to calculate GPA for financial aid purposes. Computers do it really well. The rest of us need a lot of help, and I'm sure a lot of students, it would be really hard. But if we see a student getting too close to the edge there, we can warn them, and in fact, we can take action. If they're dropping out of classes at a rate that predicts a non-success for them, we can do that. So, we've built in a lot. The reality is, we use the technology to give us a great deal of information, to share that information with students, to invite them in, and everybody says, you don't have to plan all of it at once. So, we have a, a very robust orientation for everybody. Welcome to Tallahassee Community College, we're delighted you're here. Sit down, let us tell you how to make a plan for your future. And, and the last point I'll make on that, and I'm happy to take questions, is that's the world those students face. I have a 30-year-old son, I'm so proud of him. He's graduating with a degree in, in engineering. He's, he's a programmer to whom they pay ungodly salary for young people, but he is a 1099 employee. He has to take care of his own social security, has to take care of his own health plan, has to take care of his own retirement, has to take care of all those things. That's very different than the world I grew up in. When I went into the state retirement system, there weren't any choices. Sign here, you're in. Now, everybody who comes to us needs to make a whole series of sophisticated choices to manage their future. Am I the only one who thinks healthcare is headed that way? Am I the only one who thinks that lifelong learning is headed that way? So, I think the skill that we're teaching students is not only beneficial to get them through us, I think it's a life skill that they need. And I'll make one final point. I think so many of us think that there are, that the students just need kind of an enthusiastic talk and send them back on the field. There are far too many students who don't understand, you do this first, then you do this, then you do this, that the way to get through the institution is to follow these steps. They may be the first in college for their family, they, maybe nobody ever taught them, but those are the ones that are the highest risk. We think they're going to be okay, and they don't know how to get through the institution. And we now have figured out a way to both support them and to give ourselves early warning if that's not working. I'm happy to say, I think some of the work being done was, was shared from Tallahassee to some of the work down here, but it's working for us. I mean, that's what, we have gone all-in on that approach, because we think it's the, the way to succeed, and we're getting a great deal of notoriety for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Should I?
Please.
Okay. Dr. Law, I've heard so many good things about you, and I'm, I'm very impressed with your resume and everything. There was one negative thing that I heard, and it concerns me. They told me that you were against four-year, four-year degrees.
Yeah.
And our college is really proud of our program, and we want to sustain it.
Good.
And on our board, so whatever it takes, you know, I'll go to Tallahassee with you.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. I'd be happy to do that. We...
And Dr. Law, she's very effective in Tallahassee, I can tell you that.
I, I now, I will drive, and you can make calls while, while we go, okay? But to be perfectly, to help you, trustee Johnson jumped, jumped the gun, and he asked that question first. But I want to give you my absolute assurance, that will, that will not be a concern for you, okay?
Thank you.
That will, you will see my energy focused exactly in the direction you would hope it to go, so thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Dr. Law, we surveyed all of your references and asked for strengths and weaknesses. And one of the strengths was that you have a lot of courage, and I want to know if you concur with that, and if you do, can you give me some examples?
I'm, I'm happy that that came up, and I'm embarrassed that, that my actions are described that way, because I don't view them that way. I, that, I have heard that referred to my leadership in areas where, as part of our achieving the dream, where we, we received a grant, and the purpose of the grant is to narrow the gap between students of color and white students and, and that. And when we got into it, we realized we didn't know enough about it. I think I referenced this in my, in my tape. And, and we, we just organized ourselves to have a, a robust dialogue. What's working, what's not working? There's no edge on it. It's not, it's not a black-white issue, it's a student issue. And when we finished doing that, we had come through a lot of things. And I was astounded that there were people saying, well, that took a great deal of courage for you to, to lead that dialogue. And to be perfectly candid, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what, what else would you expect a president to do? So, so the fact that it was a, a difficult and sometimes edgy dialogue, I knew that when I started it, but if we're going to make progress, we've got to have that dialogue and get through it. So, I, I don't think that's particularly, the other, so, so if that's courageous, I, you know, I'll plead guilty, but it was, I didn't feel that. I was embarrassed the first time I heard that. The other courage is one that you'll enjoy. When I, when I, we were going to change what we do by sharing information. I mean, we all, it's a great institution when I got there, but we had no information on which to document that, that greatness. And I said, you know what? Here's what we're going to do. We're going to take a snapshot of the first-time-in-college students in, this was August of 2003, I'd gotten there late 2002, and we're going to watch that group go through our institution. They come to us with clean slates. All of the rules and regs are our rules and regs, all of the processes are, they're not students who failed out before, they're first-time-in-college students. It's a subset. And by the way, we're going to report that group to the Board of Trustees first each semester. And people say, you can't, you can't take that information to the Board of Trustees. I said, why not? They were going to ask them for the money to support our strategies. And everyone said, no, no, you can't. And I said, well, that's what we're going to do, so let's do that. It has worked like a charm. The first time we did that and the board reviewed it and here's where we are and here's where we go, and we found some things that we wish we didn't find, the dialogue on campus was, well, they asked the same questions we would have asked. And I said, of course they did, they have the same interest. What's the student success? So the whole making the leap to use information and to share it with everybody is often what people talk about courage. And then the last is a variation on the very question that Mr. Johnston was asking. I will tell you, writing that letter, that email to my colleagues to say, I think the state policy, we need to refocus that, I got a lot of positive, but it wasn't universally revered. I thought then and I think events have proven that it was the right thing to do. We finally got a unanimous vote to say, let's move in a different direction. I didn't need the unanimous vote, I needed us to engage the difficulty. So I come to that, I kind of like that. Thank you for sharing that, but I'm not, usually this modest, but that's not a word I associate myself with.
First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Gibbons, for asking a question concerning student services, because that's what we're about. Maybe more of our questions should have been along that area. And I'm pleased that y'all were, are in Achieving the Dream College. That's something we're trying to apply for. Matter of fact, we just have applied for recently and hopefully will be successful because that's certainly important to us here too. Whether we get that grant or not, we're still going to do the ideals of that grant and are working on that. And that's something, over the last few years, we've started a men-on-the-way program to mirror our women-on-the-way program because we've, this board's talked a lot about the missing male from the college campus, especially the missing minority male from the college campus. My question though is, there's been a lot of talk among this board and I was shocked at the interest of our students, and that's probably understating it, in the textbook issue. And wondered if you had placed any creative solutions in Tallahassee to the textbook issue because this is one where concerns our students greatly and is truly pricing people out of college.
Thanks, that, it came up in every dialogue in the last two days, okay? So, yes.
Not surprising.
Not surprising and it did. And my answer has been, the guys who have the high hand now will not have the high hand forever, okay? I think their days are numbered. The emergence of eBooks will break that monopoly. The state of Florida, we had some follow-up with your staff who are actively involved in this, but the state of Florida is creating its own textbook industry, electronic books, and they are moving it very rapidly and very fast through the University of Florida Press. So a year from now, we'll be looking at literally hundreds of textbooks that students can acquire at a much, much lower price in electronic format that they own, they don't have to give it back, there's none of the buyback in used textbooks. So I think, quite frankly, if we think we're going to win the argument with the Follets and the publishers, I've been to that dance, they're going to win, you know, but they're not going to win forever. And even the local flap that you have here, you know, if it resolves, it's going to lower textbook prices three or four percent.
Yeah.
You know, so, okay, great, now we've done it, so now $150 textbook costs $145. Great. So, and we beat Follett at their own game, right? And, you know, it's craziness. So we have to lend our best energies to more of the electronic textbooks and I was, again, delighted that people at St. Pete College have already, they've been in the leadership role with that at the state level and that's the future. We ought to just get out of the old dialogue and get moving on the new dialogue.
Another one of your strengths, you're a change agent. We've heard a little bit about that. What do you see changing around here?
You know, I'm going to resist. Thank you for the opportunity, but I'm going to resist. I'm my own person. You know, I followed a legendary figure in Tallahassee. And dialogue, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
And I guess I was the only one in town who never was concerned of who can follow TK Weatherall. I know what my skill set is, I know how valuable that skill set is, I know how enthusiastic I am and how to mobilize those talents behind an institution. I suspect that I'll figure out where to put my best energies over a long period of time when I'm here, but to try to imply that in a, even with a couple of visits and a couple of days that I have any insight now would be, I'm also smart enough not to do that. Change agents, quite frankly, change agents pick their game, it's the way you'd be successful at that. If you don't do it in a timely basis, you know, you end up an ex-change agent is what happens.
I've not been through a presidential transition. We've had the same president, as you know, for a very long time. And you've been through two presidential transitions as a president. Kind of educate me as far as a process, as this board is going through a presidential transition, I'm going to ask for some free advice here. What would you guide us as far as going through the transition? Because that's a very difficult time for both. And also, in those other positions, when you were offered the job at Tallahassee and when you were offered the job in Texas, what was the period of time between the time you were offered the job and that you started those jobs? And did you find those appropriate amount of time?
Let me answer that part first and we'll work back to the transition part. I was, it might be, I'm not, it might be eight years to the day. It was mid-March when I was hired in Tallahassee, whatever the March board meeting was that year. And I was immediately retained on a separate contract starting April 1st so that I could execute contracts on behalf of the college. They wanted to be sure that transitioned to me while we were working out the details of the president's contract, okay? But they wanted to be sure that there was no question about that. And then I split my bet. You know, the reality is, back home, the half-life is about, they talk about you in the third person when you're in the room as soon as you're named, okay? Well, when Bill was here, oh, Bill's still here, okay? They move on very quickly, okay? They've said so many nice things, next, I mean, they'll move ahead. I'm telling you, that's what happens. It takes your breath away at how fast they wish you well and move on.
But that's helpful.
Well, it happens. I guess in my, in my thinking in this situation, not being presumptuous, but you asked for guidance, I would think that Tallahassee would want me to use my talent and my experience to help craft next year's operating budget. So as soon as we know what the legislature has given us, we've already done most of the work, we really just have to plug numbers and make some decisions. So that has, we always finish that in May and we bless it in June, but the heavy work is done by the May board meeting and that's where the board really approves it. If you have no other concerns, this is what will come back to you next month in the form of the budget. And I would think they would want me to do that and I think that would be fair to them. On the other hand, you would want me to have some input into the budget here, but there's not enough time for me to craft the budget for me to own, I'll take responsibility for it, but you would want me to kind of recycle that. And then I think I, you know, I think the official transition, we'd probably have some sort of contractual relationship for an interim and then we would sign a longer-term contract and probably report for duty July 1st. I think Pat and I would want to spend a little bit of time together because we know that the first year, the president and his wife in this case, Pat and I, will get a lot of invitations and we have to accept a lot of invitations. After you've been there eight years, you can be a little more selective, you don't have to get to the heart ball eight years in a row, the ninth year, you can let a vice president attend on your behalf, okay? But we would want to do that. And that was the dialogue we had, by the way, as a family, are we up to that? And we're here today because we made that decision. So that's one. Secondly, you know, I'm thinking of one of my management consultants who, the guidance he gave me was skate fast on thin ice. So after you make your choice, move fast to execute the choice, okay? And that would be the kind of guidance. Let's not leave everybody guessing about what's going to happen and move forward. Whatever dialogue we have to have to engage, let's have that dialogue and move forward. But letting it go on and on is not healthy, doesn't help anybody, people get very awkward. So those always work out, by the way, I mean, they're issues of concern. Then after that though, it's really important for us to engage together. You would want me to take that learning plan and to bring it back to you in a form where you could comment on it and see if we've got the issues right and then see what the highest priority issues, but that's your job as a board with my input and guidance, make sure it represents what you have heard and what your experience is telling you and I can bring a new pair of eyes to all that. And then from that, we would start a process that would lead to the identification of a renewed strategic plan during the fall and then budget strategies to implement that next spring. That would be the way I would see things folding. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Dr. Law, I think you've commented somewhat on this already, but would this basically be your last move to come to St. Petersburg?
I have no credibility on this issue, Mr. Johnston, okay? Yes, sir, it would. And, you know, I'm 61 years old and I'm the youngest 61-year-old that you've ever met, but when I'm 71, I really don't want to be standing in front of another board somewhere seeking their work. I want to come here and finish my career is what I'd like to do and I'd like to finish it, leading this institution to another level. I, in my, I know what I can do in 10 years, I did that in Texas, I know what I can do in eight years, I've done that in Tallahassee. And I think you ought to think of me in terms of eight to 10 years and then we'll all sit back and say, is this, is there more or is it time to make yet another transition? You've lived a gifted life, you know, one transition since 1942 is not the norm, okay? But I think you would expect me to give it my best for as long as, in that timeframe and then see where we are. But I, I'm not, this is, it's not as much fun as it looks being on the job market, okay? It's a lot tougher.
Well, if you last as long as Carl did, you'll be in your 90s, so we don't expect that much out of you.
Right, no.
But it'd be nice to know that you're committed to us in the long term.
If that was your question, yes, sir. This is the last one and I'm not brave enough to tell my wife that we're going to go through this again. That much courage I don't have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, folks?
Dr. Law, thank you very much. This has been a great, great afternoon and we very much appreciate you being with us today. As you are probably aware, we have two other candidates that we're going to be interviewing over the next couple of weeks and then we are meeting on April 13th to make our decision. So we are very thankful that Mrs. Law is with us also and hope that you enjoyed your time here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.